Everybody.
Call the April 12th. Call the April 12th work session with our city council. Should be noted that the city manager is out. He may be back, but I'm not sure. We'll see how that gets him. We'll just play it right here. The city council has the minutes from March 8th. And March 22. There were some discussions about that. And if somebody chooses to make a motion for a minute, please do so during that time period. We have swearing in of Officer Nick Carter and the fire marshal. What is that? Is that a title?
It's like his boyfriend Piper.
Oh, okay. Let's look this side detector. Brandon, let's talk about some John Deere gators. Tell me what you got.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My title of the public works, I've noticed one thing as we've been short on vehicles. Not short on manpower, but we are on vehicles. Right now, we're having to run four people in one truck. Where I can split those people up to do two different jobs at one time if we have the equipment. Vehicles right now are not even Ford Chevrolet Dodge. They're not around where we can order those. My solution for that is John Deere gators. They're a two-seater utility vehicle with a caddles. They got heat and air, so we can use them year-round. They have towing capabilities, so we can pull a small trailer with those like a pressure washer trailer. That would actually benefit us on the trail system because right now we can't get that pressure washer with a certain parts and trailer. The trucks don't fit back there and have to pull the pressure washer. This will actually get it back there. So it would benefit the public works department by adding the vehicles to the fleet. Where we can get out, do more than one thing, split the crews up. Make the workflow and the times a little bit better for the public work department. That's all for that. Any questions?
Mr. Renick?
I Googled a picture of a gator. It looks like a, I think they call it UTV.
Yes, yes. These are UTVs. These will be strictly legal, so they'll have turn signals, brake lights, everything on. That way, we can go through the trailers, take one fifty-four with the round road.
No questions.
No questions.
How many people?
Two people with a ride each.
And you have no equipment?
Yes. There's a bed on the back of it. It's not a big one, but we can actually make some brackets to both weed eaters, blowers, all that too as well. When they're pulling the trailer, they'll be able to carry a lot over on the equipment. They need to do that job.
So they can pull the trailer?
They need, it's got a two thousand pound trailer ready on the back, so we can pull the trailer with the motor.
And then on the streets that we have, they have all the streets.
If they were to go down any street, we've got a, it might be really easy on the streets that are, when it's raining, can't get a truck on. These have a smaller footprint, so that I can carry the grass and move it back.
Can you pull that little tractor over to go?
I'll look for the carrier tractor. We got trucks that will get it back.
Because I was looking at like your, like the community events.
Yes. Entirely different. So it's a territory if I did pick your truck with.
No questions.
Technically, one question. As far as other equipment, landscaping equipment and all that, what condition are we in?
Right now, we're okay. We don't have any extras. I'm trying to locate some right now. With COVID going on, steel, power equipment is only really part of it. So I've got to do is try to locate some, right, because the pricing will end up low. But we don't have any spare weed eaters, blowers, and that. With the mechanics already, that's going to help. That way, we're not going to be down on equipment for as long as it has been passed.
One more question. Long, um, my husband. You know, we're against all the sidewalk and there's a lot of annual rain going to rain. You know, they got an handling solution.
I know they're not going to get finished on that Lake Harbor project. They're going to start on that next week. So hopefully that'll fix that drainage issue or something like that.
Thank you.
Now, we've heard that before, are you sure?
I hope, I hope.
It's going to rain Thursday.
We heard that last part.
Brandon, down on Lake Harbor and across from Childers Way, I think it is. It is backing up there and it's never backed up there until they put that.
Put that sidewalk in?
Yeah, so they may have to make a drain.
I'll agree with the contractors on that whenever we meet out there next week.
If you look and look at the sidewalk and I see the water standing, we can.
Oh, we can tell it.
Post this week.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to request you update the technology that we currently have. The current, the current leader that we have here is kind of limited and then also is they are phasing out the equipment. Which may not be compliant with the USP international. So, so I've been working with Pitney Bow because we already been working with Pitney Bow. And I would like to submit this proposal here. With the news, with the new technology is it will be compliant with the United State Department Office. And then small screen, make it easy to use. And because we, we're moving the new software soon, B S and A. And we, we're going to do the in-house mailing with the post office anymore. So we need something kind of more efficient, more faster versus to the current one. We provide the speed up to one twenty later per minute versus to the current one today. It is kind of a separate time for staff, so you can do other tasks. And, and this, this process leader they have, they can be able to expand to the label printer. Which mean, we can print label also, which is at the reduced cost versus, you know, we go out there and we get a label also. We can do print right in-house, you know, like a Walco printer, the type of machine. And I'll show you the saving cost at the end here. And with the, the smart software that they integrate with this device, I can be able to, or finance, they be able to log into the portal. They can run, they can see all the features of the machine. Then we can even hit a push-out configuration right on the browser. So we don't have to sit right in front of the machine and then make, make change to the posting itself because of the limitation of the current one that we have. The current one we have is, I would say, about six years old. But with this new technology is kind of help you to make it, do the job better. And lastly, the way, the way we do coding for accounting code, let's say, that right now we, we can run by department. If you put in a code and the department July, how much post it, we want to do for ourself, for department. The current machine, we, we can't run the report. We can only run by, let's say, today I reviewed about five thousand dollar post it. And final number, I reload it again, but I can not, I can not read the detailed report for department. I can only show today, the, and then final number. We have to do like calculate manually just to, for the cost of, for finance. So there's no detail of the report to show the timeframe, how much we, we would July for the post. Because we, we do the seven thousand in-house and we do generate a lot of post it over, over time, right? I think so. So with this in mind, and I've been working with Pitney Bow, and that's the current, right? With this current machine. So central is the current machine. And if you, I know that the test column is small, but on average, we save about fourteen percent if we go to retail. Let's say retail, how they charge you fifty-eight cents. And here, with this machine, they charge you like first time fifty-three. But the, the label is, will help you with the saving. Let's see, I think on there like ten dollars something, but on average, we save about fourteen percent. Let's say as an example, you, we send a package to somebody. We can, we can, we have the printer right here. We can print the label also. And then we reduce the fun right off of the post it, the account. With the central saving of easily. And that's all. Because right now is kind of the time to renew with the equipment anyway. So, so with this new feature, it really saves money and then also managing better. Because of the option printer, double printer and, and with the recording function for finance.
Questions? Renick?
No questions.
Mr. Trent?
So, so here is two hundred thirty-two thousand, one thousand three thousand a year contract. Is this a now in holding, is that still under the approved budget?
Uh, let's go with this.
So, because this is the daily operation and it's under the approved budget. And the contract I'm now by the city policy is that it's both department have discretion, but it's under the city manager discretion. No need for council to take action at this point. I don't think we need to offer this because it's not spending. Hotel motor cat is not smart. It's not special products for the cat to print it to get the cats comfortable. Thank you for the presentation and the level of motion. But personally, by the policy, by the level of the contract, no need for, no need for the council to take action on this item at this point. This item of city manager discretion.
Mr. Quan. Roughly, you know how much money we spend on, on process every year?
I can, I can run a report with finance. But generally, we generate about, quarterly, we do the sanitation for residential. It's about sixteen hundred, so we kind of do apply that by six, two percent.
Sixty-four.
And then quarterly, we do about three hundred a year for promotion. So that number, I don't have that number. But I have a number, kind of quarterly, we be field about, around five thousand there, I see. Kind of quarterly.
So that's mainly selling the sanitation department already.
Well, including finance, because we're dealing with our checks. I'm just trying to get the biggest number so we can see what the cost is.
They didn't post us in a thing like got the different thing.
Because, so finance, we do send out check, they do that.
Mr. Dean?
No questions.
And you did say it was Pitney Bow, right?
Yes.
Pretty well standard.
Yes.
Only that since we are, we're going to have city manager resent the budget policy. So since we're not here yet, so let's, because we did not have a chance to discuss about the meeting minutes. And there was a opinion on that. So, and my concern is that the recording of the meeting minutes, for the meeting on March twenty-second to twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. Because the minutes does not describe those motions that I called. So here's the motion that I called. I'm not the only one here doing our task on the meeting minutes for the record section on March the eighth. For the meeting and this, that, and the, I don't know one. One, I don't know two. And council can walk now because the contract work on my is to call a little bit more. We have to call the government to read the report. And on sound, I'm going to be in court. And I, um, every time you want, we, we need to hold another tag operation and, um, and for our, that's our way to come, I'm yours. Council can walk now of all the items because the contract now being provided to us. Because the, who have the fourth section, three minutes for the meeting on March the eighth. The whole of the discussion in the, on the second, it is not recorded in, um, so that is, uh, three minutes. And the meeting minutes was just a lot of, uh, whatever we get. We didn't have a chance to talk what is recorded within any discussion report.
Please go ahead and begin your work session.
So that's what, that's what the motion had was called. And by official code Georgia, fifteen, fourteen, one, second E, two B. It say that such minutes, so minimum include the name of the member, present at the meeting, that description of this motion or other post on that. My motion wasn't described the way it were called. It just say, for the first motion, it say council, it's mayor written, that council James voted nay. Uh, although, let's say a man of three minutes under legal system item and had to try to vote nay. The second motion that I made, it didn't describe what I called, which was why, what the meeting minutes should be deferred. So, and I have asked to a man to correct the record way before the meeting minutes were posted to public. And I was told there was a council policy that have been right there. So my concern is that, um, I never seen that policy. And I have asked to see that policy that so I can better understand what it is, to have better compliance, but I have not. The policy never been provided to the cast, to be, at the request either. And so I'm looking at the official code of Georgia. It specifically say the motion have to be described. My motion wasn't described the way it were called. So I'm asking for the council to change the language accordingly to where it, it has the description of the motion. I would appreciate that.
Other comments, Ellen?
If, if I may, um, this meeting minutes. This issue have been going on for forever. And I, um, I like to have a few question. Who in the city have need to understand who does have the authority to approve the meeting minutes? Or it just, or it should reflect exactly what, what happened in meetings? So who, who approve what? Who does have a legal authority to approve what? Mayor, you have authority to approve the meeting minutes?
Ultimately, the city council is the entity that has approved it, and that's which is why it is on the agenda.
But why is it, I was told that it got to be approved by you before they even posted on the package.
I do review it. That is correct.
And then you, last meeting, you said yourself that you haven't forgotten the present, okay, but for that to give out, that was late.
That's correct.
Okay? So, I mean, the issue been going on for a long, it's time. And why, why someone in the city have the authority to control what going on in the record? It should reflect exactly what happened in meeting. And it going on and on and on. I mean, somebody behind the scene controlled what's going there and still allow what going there, what not, what to show there, what not. And what are they trying to hide? That's not my thing. I mean, it just, it should reflect exactly, I mean, to me, me, I I, I don't say much, I don't reflect what I said, what I think much, but I mean, for the public, the meeting minutes should reflect what happened in our meetings. And that's the way it should be, and then why would it? Why we have to call for a certain part and show a certain part? And I don't, I look up and I don't see that a mayor had authority to, authority to, to control that, to approve that. I mean, I'm going to put it off, okay? But you can say that the law doesn't require you to put everything in there, but, but, but meeting minutes. Meaning that you record what happened in a meeting. And why do we have to pick and show what to show and what to hide? And, and I, 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 I don't, I don't, I don't get that part. It just, I was told that mayor has to go to approve this and that before it's going to be sent out. And I, to me, if this council allowing that, kind of stop that one. I, I, I don't think it's right. I don't, I don't think it's legal. I don't think it's transparent. I'm asking, you know, we can, you know, too much work, record everything, there's software out there. So getting to, and get the setup of the, the, the recording and post it like a I mean, also, you can set a YouTube channel, write everything in there. But again, that, that not required by law. To have a YouTube channel and by any time, who knows, somebody go in there, press the delete button and, and delete all the record. That still happen. So I'm asking this council to to really look into this issue and to think for once and prevent it from, from going on and on and never stop.
Thank you. Other comments?
Following to Councilwoman, um, Cameron. I actually found a free software that can just drive a word recording to the text message. So it is efficient and time-saving, make the work more productive and efficient. This software allow five hundred minutes of just, of recording for one, for free. And after that, it achieves like twenty cents per unit count. So with that five hundred minutes, it's equivalent about over eight hours. It should cover our meeting minutes during the month. And if we go as easy that a little bit, we can pay a bit more. And that will be the benefit for the city to be efficient. For the stack, we can save the time and avoid the, the situation that we have been dealing. Discussing point not made in mission when certain specific cause and public comment intentionally got on the meeting minutes versus the discussion on the items on the agenda where council have to vote. And that kind of keep the transparency away from the public. Public would, the more information we provide to public to let them know how our discussing go and how we make the decision important. And there are so many reason why the council had to discuss a meeting and make the decision in front of the public. Then why, because they law require that we have to have the open meeting. Why we have to, why do we need to post the meeting minutes agenda to public? So public know what are we going to do, what are we going to discuss? So they have an opportunity to come to participate or to, to see how we do that. So that, we, and this practice, um, happened for eight and meeting minutes. I know that in the first term, Councilman and Council Dean, um, few years in the first term, they pushed to have the meeting minutes to be forbidden, to keep governments' privacy. And I've opposed to that. Now we have a way to have that be done in the efficient way. And thank goodness for the technology make our life easier. I'm asking you guys, what do you think about that?
Other comments?
Let me say this. Let me say this. This topic, issue, it's time for it to be resolved. There's so much city business that has to be executed, decisions have to be made, leadership demonstrated. So if it's a matter of understanding through city attorney, legal counsel. So if it's a matter of understanding through city attorney, legal counsel, which has provided opinions about this on several occasions, defer the minutes, understand from legal counsel what is exactly necessary, and let's all move on. To say that we have to have verbatim minutes for capturing every word, if it comes down to the motion and the vote, as a council, I think we can work together well enough to put this to bed finally. It's been circulating for two years. That's enough. So if we need to defer these minutes, have legal counsel provide us the opinion once again so that we can move on and focus on city business rather than capturing the, the, or the. Let's move on.
Very good.
Other comments?
You hear nothing? I don't have. This one was a, we sent out an RFP for audit services and we use a number of audit services in the past, and we use Morgan Jenkins now. And then last year, we asked for a little bit of a shuffle even within Morgan Jenkins, which is a pretty large auditing company. And we just said, rather than send us the same employees, you know, just send us a couple of new ones. So that way we can kind of keep the system healthy. We have, Chris White is, is now the finance officer of the city. And he was walking through the proposals for audit services. And we will formally ask that that be postponed and basically, you know, denial of bids until the new finance officer is chosen and they can take a chance to look at it and read the comments. Miss Tan.
No comments?
Mr. Trent.
We might need to amend the request for proposal because in the packet it say for two thousand, audited for two thousand twelve. We don't need the two thousand twelve to be audited.
In this particular case, we're denying all bids and making it void. Other comments? Mr. Qua.
No comment.
Mr. Dean. Pursuits and promises, Mr. Baker is not here, so we'll just keep going. Relative fire presentation, sounds like half a lot of good luck. You got to get a little bit of luck.
The mayor and council. I would ask to give a brief presentation about the fire that was managed to preserve that happened back on March twenty-sixth. To kind of share what we did, what happened. Reynolds, as we all know, is very poor cause, is a big part of our community. So we need to do whatever we can to preserve the, preserve if you will. So I'll just go through a few slides here and kind of let you know how things went there. So it was on March twenty-sixth. And first, we discovered wood fires in general. We don't do a lot of this fires, there's not a lot of unbelted land in city of Mars, y'all know. So it's a little something different for us, we don't have the gear that wildland firefighters use. Our structural firefighting gear, so it's much heavier and bulkier than, than what's typically used. But on the other hand, we don't really buy wildland firefighting gear because we hardly have these type fires. High winds was a big issue out there on that day. Twenty-five, thirty-five mile an hour winds, which was a huge issue for us. But the goal on this fires is to contain the fire protect structures, get the head out and take the fuel away, but make it some kind of break so that you have another bit of dirt on the ground so the fire can't skip over and keep going. No structures were damaged and the final mound of burn area was determined to be about ten to twenty acres. So our, the initial dispatch was actually from a forest park resident who lives on Phillips Drive, right across from, you know where the fire tower is inside Reynolds, where the back gate, right across the street from City Forest Park. So someone there called, they, it was on fire. So Forest Park Fire Department was originally dispatched. And they sent two engines, a ladder truck, two ambulances, battalion chief and division chief, basically everything they had because this fire was so large. We were dispatched about three-thirty and left just after seven o'clock. Forest Park arrived about three and requested our assistance about thirty minutes later. And they left about the same time we did. So when they got there, they had a large fire on Phillips Drive side. They soon realized that we'd need more help due to the high winds. We got to call those Forest Park requests because they're running out of water. But fires spread rapidly because of the winds. They weren't clear on whose jurisdiction the cobbles on. Were always their first resource for additional help, that's why they called us first. Most likely cause of fire was a limb that fell on the power lines, creating an arc right on Phillips Drive, right across from this house. So that's what it looks like it started. So when we were dispatched, we were asked to help by city one engine, and that was all. Because Forest Park actually kind of thought it was only them initially. But we also sent one of our aid units and they blocked traffic and they were on standby in case someone was injured on the city. But they're also available to respond to calls in city of Mars. Engine number two, our second engine, I put them on Burbank Trail in case the fire broke through the woods, got into the, toward the power line right away. That drives brush dollars very rapidly towards its home, so they just parked on Burbank. Consular monitors are what the fire was doing. Again, we still weren't clear on whose jurisdiction for them, but they didn't adequately despite the fire, doing the most best to the situation. Forest Park, I said, had both their ambulances there, which was all they had in service that day. While there, they were receiving two medical calls in the city of Forest Park and both times they said, can you send an ambulance? I said, no, that's all that I got and what you had in city of Mars, call a county. So they had to call a county twice for EMS calls in their city. So our engine thirty-one, our engine thirty-one crew was the one who was actually fighting the fire there. And that was Captain Fleming, firefighter Lockett, and firefighter Semple. They helped to perform reconnaissance, um, walk around the perimeter of fire and see if there were instructors, we take a risk and report back to the command with their findings. They sprayed some blowers to help create firework. While I was responding to my house, this was on Saturday, Captain Fleming called Tony Public Works and said, hey, I got an idea that can use blowers up here to contain this fire. Can we get some blowers? And they said, absolutely. And so the captain Fleming called me and said, hey, you can go out to Public Works, your blowers, and I was right at the city section, he said, turn around and go back. We were Public Works and Tripp, let me over there and opened up, I got two blowers and what I helped was plenty of gas, which was a half a can, I think it was a two gallon can or something, and both blowers were full, I said, ah, that's clean. And so I took off for the fire. Our crew wore the blowers and they went along the edge of fire, blowing the pine straw leaves back onto the fire to create this firework to stop it from moving. Blowers worked and I asked Captain Fleming, have you known that? He said, I just watched a YouTube video on doing that. He said, I've never seen nothing before, I said, you called me and told me to go back and blow it, I said, you gotta be eighty-nine. Never done this on a wood fire, but it worked. So great success there. Forest Park called for, for George Forester to come. They don't have much equipment, enough terrain for those type of wood fires like this. It took them about two hours to get there. They told, probably sent us blowers just before they, they're high on the break, they actually make the earth come up and cover the leaves and whatever, before you're there, and that, that also creates another firework. Like I said, it took them a couple hours to get there, I think they had to hit five, three, or maybe six. But they did go in and, because there's a couple of breaks in the fence, if you go down the George Power East Nation, where there's road or power foots taken, the traffic's always going around, there's two breaks in the fence that were the access to the park. That was, they didn't damage any of the walking trails or anything like that. I'm at the Forest Park, we determined this fire was most likely in Lake County, so we called Lake County Trail. They ended up sending three engines, an airline truck, a brush truck, and a couple of chief officers with. They got that, so they offered us jurisdiction, so they did, but we got this fire and we had to offer that. So we all worked together, it was great. Forest Park was in command the whole time, calling the shots, but we all worked together as we should. So here's a map of the nature preserve. And I have, the red marker on the top left side is where we actually had fire. And so that's our, at the essence of ten to twenty acres, because Reynolds is a hundred forty-six acres total. The top corner up there, right in the middle of the string, on this corner, there's a, that's where the back gate is. Like right past where the fire started is where the back gate is. And so the trail, as you see by the map, really helped contain the fire from getting close to the Reynolds Road. But we were attacking it everywhere just to make sure they not get that close. Had a few people walking on the trail, believe this what was going on. We turned them around and sent them back down to the bottom of the hill. The fire never reached the right way for George Power, so that's good, because I think it would move a lot faster, had you had that there, we would have prevented from doing that. The line right in the middle of the map, here, straight from top to bottom. Two days later, I came and looked at our GIS map in Lake County and asked the Morris City Mayor. So basically, this entire fire was pretty much in city of Mars. But all three parts, we didn't know. Have never fought a fire up there, never paid attention that close to where the city limits are, no houses we ever respond to up there. But at the end of the day, it didn't matter, it was on, we worked together and accomplished it all.
I think that's the first time I've seen that.
Yeah, I got off here in a website today. So in summary, it was a successful outcome due to cooperation between the three agencies. Mutual aid partners are very important in the fire service, especially in the state of Hays with low staffing levels with all departments. And we're glad to be able to help out. In total, there's about forty firefighters. We made up eight of them, I believe, including myself. There were no injuries to firefighters or the, which is always a good thing. And here's some pictures, I don't know how clear they are on your monitors there, but this is our crew using backup blowers. And hit this on about two hours. Also, I'll tell you, as far as the gas goes, we, we drank that gas time of day, just out of the gas by the time it gets. So they used it a lot longer than I thought they would, but it worked out. This is my last slide. These two guys on the top left, just that one holding the gas can, I think he would be a suspect and all this, I'm not sure. Those guys are a little shady too, but anyway. That's Michael Barron's, Stephen Barron's husband that, you know, works there at Reynolds. When I got called at home, my wife knew she had to be real well, she said, thank Stephen. And I said, sure, she has her, Reynolds Lady Preserves on fire. Thank God, of course, go ahead, that's fine. And so when I got there, Stephen came running to me, oh, my house, how did this go on? Kathy called me and I was freaking out, I was working in the backyard, didn't even know what happened. So they were, they'd already gave her up and were able to take our folks down to the furthest points of the fire, so it was very beneficial to us. You see all the hooves laying out there, that's all Forest Park's hooves. Our crew pitched in, uploaded all the hooves back on the truck, never complained, it was just great. Worked the environment there without three parts. So questions?
Mr. Tan.
No questions, good job.
Mr. Trent.
No questions. Thank you for the good job.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Dean.
I was under the impression that that was covered by about a county. That is not the case, that that's not a county.
Well, it's all about county, yes, all about Clay County. But it's in,
So part of,
That part of it, where that line was on the map was,
So the other part is Lake City?
Sunlight City and Sunland over the Clay County.
So I'm hoping that you all got most of the kudzu and poison ivy and privates, so we don't have to do a pool this year.
Actually talked about, they've been talking about being a scrap burner there. And so this worked out.
That's a good point, because it's, it's a true nature preserve, which means they truly let it go as nature intended. So therefore, do they know what the cause of the fire was?
Well, we think that the tree that fell on power line and an arc. Tree that fell because of the high winds on Phillips Drive.
So then they would consider like a natural burn to be part of, you know, the, the root picking about, you know, what you go in there and dig. So I'm curious, I don't know how much of that wood that was on the ground, looked like it was pretty much there, but there's a lot of timber jumped over.
Oh yeah, a lot of big logs were burned.
If those woods had been standing, they would have already been dead, just laying on the ground.
Correct.
So you have a lot of,
One, fairly, because that's true fail. You know what a fire tower is, a Clay County fire wall, that was, it's true though, across the bay, it was all, they burned, it's hard rock. And with rainfall and everything, they must not promote.
Well, there's a lot of native resilience in there too, that I'm assuming if they were burned, you know, that prevent them from regrowth?
Probably, it'd take a while to probably actually root them.
But if they do somebody to prescribe burns down in South Georgia. I've never, never seen it done in the nature preserve or in this path.
Stuff in here, good stuff, we can't, we can't burn it.
What, once the fire took off, there's a little lot of fuel there.
Yeah. As long as it's just got the kudzu and privates and that old ivy and all that, that's fine. But there are a lot of things that are, that are there, that's come from all over the state of Georgia. And you don't find them just anywhere. There's a special.
We own some of that power line these right now. I don't think any of that is done as a firework, because a lot of forestry, they have fire ribs. I'm just curious, because if it hit that grass and that grass was dry, Burbank would have been trouble.
If it were taking out wind slowed, it would have totally gone.
Do you know, we have a ranger, we have park ranger. That replaced John. John was, John, I can't think his last name right now. And he, well, he retired, so.
I don't know if they retired him.
I was about to say, I'm getting old because he's way too much older than me.
Retired?
So, yeah, because a lot of that stuff, I think he kind of managed it, you know, to keep it from, you know, being so, so rustic like that. Lot of, I, I've noticed there's a lot of trees, he would get them, you know, chip them up and have it. So a lot of stuff is there.
Stephanie's over the preserve, the nature preserve itself.
A park ranger.
Park ranger.
And y'all know the story of the fire towers up there? They all were donated from the forestry service, I believe, so it was good. Henry Kennedy, because the forestry services are using more of that. And they erected, saved the park on, from on the road for a long time, current sit-ups, well, they erected it. Now apparently they can't use it because they can't get engineered it, sign off since it was rebuilt. So it's definitely in the micro wood there sometimes, and I can totally see almost, you know, somehow. So it'd be really nice if they could get an engineer to sign off and go up there and look, because I think Michael said it's a hard day. They think that's the highest point in Clay County.
Is it located in the moral section or on the,
In the moral section, if you go on Phillips, you look over, there's a roof cut driveway, you can see the fire tower. It's a repeat off the road.
That's a, that's a wall.
Maybe the next time we're engaging in destruction like here, we'll have a little add-on to see what the price is.
Well, they've had engineer look at it, they, something about, they reconstructed it, they didn't do it.
Did you go up there? Did you go up there?
I'm not.
Because you're worried about destruction.
He said, I'd go up there if I wanted to.
I was gonna say, I've been the best test, you got a two-hundred pound man up there, you'll tell me real quick whether it's true. Thanks, Steve, good job. We got about eight minutes before the city council starts.
For the, we have the salaries by the end. And I saw that the city manager said, For the, we have a salary study done, and I saw that the city manager sent the council the proposals package of, that, they afford thousands of each employee. I also saw Councilman Quan, uh, proposed to have ten percent increase. That's in our option, and since we have the salary, we've paid to have the salary study done. And our city is a small city, and we have a very limited employee number. Everybody hopefully are on their job and the person we have multiple hats. Uh, my proposal said, since based on the salary study done, let's do, run a estimated cost for the employee who have been with us for three years, putting that in mid range of the salary study, because that's what the market does, we might not be able to talk to the, more than that, but just let, put them on the mid range and see how much it costs, and then we have the, um, something to compare what our option, what our pay we are losing. And I heard that the city manager would have work to get it done for the next council meeting discussion. So to show you the concern, that, let's use the salary study guidance and see how much would it cost, the cost for us.
Any other comments? We will see you later, something.